Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to today's work session on the budget. We will be going through four items: the Raleigh Water Enterprise, the Stormwater Management Enterprise, the Solid Waste Services Enterprise, and other enterprise funds. We'll get an update on that. So we'll be starting today hearing from Raleigh Water.
My name is Whit Wheeler. I've been the interim director of Raleigh Water since January 1st this year, and I want to thank you for having me here today to present the FY23 budget presentation. First of all, we will go over the agenda. We'll talk about some accomplishments we had this past year. We'll talk about cost drivers from our operating budget and our capital improvement program. We'll discuss our rate model. We'll discuss a rate recommendation, and we'll go over some of our efforts from our customer assistance and outreach program. Next slide. Okay, thank you. Sorry. So this year, again, we obtained 100% compliance in our water quality for all of our treatment facilities, our wastewater and our water treatment plants. As you can see, we've got a long track record of success here. That's attributed to the dedication of our staff, but also your dedication to providing the funding and resources we need to operate these facilities. Looking at accomplishments in our wastewater management, our bioenergy recovery project is ongoing, and we are hoping to have it, expect to have it started up in the second half of next fiscal year. As you may recall, this project will reduce our waste solids by 50%, and will also provide compressed natural gas to fuel our buses. We've also implemented our sewer maintenance division implemented a hotspot mitigation plan to proactively prevent sewer spills. And this project was made possible because of all the data that we gathered from our asset management system as well as our work order management systems. So we're able to funnel that information into a program and target specific areas to proactively prevent sewer spills. We've also purchased 26,000 pounds of nitrogen allocation and further optimized our treatment processes. As you may recall, we have a cap on the nitrogen that can be discharged to the Neuse River. So these efforts will ensure that the city of Raleigh continues to grow. Photograph over to the right is an example of some of the artwork on our manholes. This has been a successful partnership with our Parks and Recreation Department. And while we haven't received an award, we're pretty sure that we have the prettiest manholes in the state. Our customer care and billing system, we had some significant efforts there. We were able to launch our budget billing system, which allows our customers to go online and establish level payments, which gets adjusted at the final month of the year. We were also able to integrate our graphical information system, GIS, and our customer care and billing systems. This effort is all about customer service and customer communication. The GIS system is where our operating systems house all our data for asset management, our project data, and our work order systems. And of course, our customer care and billing has our business side of the house. By integrating these two systems, we're able to have real-time customer information for our operating divisions to communicate with our customers about projects, capital projects, or other operational issues. Our Dempsey Benton Water Treatment Plant achieved a president's award from the Partnership for Safe Water this year. The partnership is made up of several water agencies, including the EPA, Water Research Foundation, Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies, and a few others. And only 47 other plants in the country have been able to achieve this level of optimal performance. So that's a significant, significant award. Switching over to our operating budget, our proposed budget is this year will be $257.5 million. That budget is composed primarily of our capital financing, which includes our pay-go cash and our debt service, and our operational expenses, which include things like personnel, salaries, benefits, our electrical costs, and chemical costs. I know you've seen this slide before, but this basically shows how our operating budget is divided into three main buckets. The blue bars across the bottom represent our operating expenses, which are, again, personnel, power, and chemicals. The green bars represent our debt service, which includes our interest and principal payments. And finally, the gray bars across the top represent our pay-go cash. And what you'll notice over time is how our pay-go cash has grown significantly over time. And this really started when we implemented our infrastructure replacement charge. And it's also a result of all the work we've done to maintain our financial metrics to keep our AAA bond rating. Some of the capital improvement projects that are ongoing, that are cost drivers for our budget, include the bioenergy recovery project, which I previously mentioned, the E.M. Johnson Water Treatment Plant. We currently have a significant project to upgrade our sedimentation basins. That project will actually double the capacity of those basins within the same footprint. There's also a significant project underway to rehabilitate our 72-inch interceptors, which feed the Neuse River Wastewater Treatment Plant. Those pipes alone carry about 90% of the wastewater in the system. And so this is also a significant project for us. And finally, the pull-and-pump station, the EB Bane Water Transmission Main. This is a $20 million project that will provide needed resiliency to make sure that we're able to provide water during all types of circumstances to our Western Pressure Zone. And in our Western Pressure Zone, we have facilities such as Rex Hospital and North Carolina State University. Our capital improvement plan is approximately $1.74 billion over the next 10 years. And we've divided that into five major buckets here to explain more where we're spending. The asset management program, which is focused on rehab and rehabilitation of existing infrastructure, makes up almost 24% of this budget. And then we have a category for interceptors, which are our large diameter sewer mains. These projects are mostly focused around capacity, but also can be focused around condition as well. And this is almost 19% of the CIP plan. Waste water pumping stations are another 16%, which will be needed for expansions and allowing the system service area to grow. Water treatment plant expansions, previously mentioned the E.M. Johnson Water Plant, but we do have upcoming projects where we'll be adding filtration capacity and ozone treatment capacity that will ultimately bring that water plant up to 120 million gallons per day. And finally, wastewater treatment plant expansions, which represent about 6% of the CIP plan. And most of these projects will be focused at the Neuse River Resource Recovery Facility. So next, we want to talk about our rate model. As you know, we have a model that takes our revenues and our expenses. We project it over time to be sure that we have the funds we need to support our program. And we always reset that model each year by looking at the actual expenses from the first half of the year and then making a projection through the second half of fiscal year '22 based on experience. Looking forward, in fiscal year '23, we made several assumptions as well. We assumed 1% growth in residential consumption. We assumed 6% growth in non-residential consumption in FY23, 1% thereafter. The 6% assumption is to account for what we expect to be a return to normal after the pandemic. 1% growth in accounts. And this year, we decided to discount the spending rate of our CIP program to 80%. The reason we did this is because of supply chain issues that we're currently seeing. There's also an extreme competition for contractors and engineers. And so after looking at what we're currently seeing with projects, we believed it was prudent to pull back a little on the expected spending rate. And we also have gone back to restructure to make sure that we're spending our pay-go cash upfront. It was a lot of work with our budget and finance folks to make sure that we were using that cash first and deferring taking on additional debt as long as possible. Our rate model has traditionally been based on a 3% rate increase, and it continues to be based on a 3% rate increase for fiscal year '24 moving forward. The rate model is intended to meet our financial debt policies beyond fiscal year '27, which includes a parity debt coverage ratio of 2.0 and a funding balance that exceeds 100% of our operating expenses. So we will need a slight increase next year to meet our coverage ratios and to support our rate model. And the recommendation that we have is a 1.5% increase on our base rate and on our volumetric charges. We're not planning any changes to our infrastructure charges or our watershed fees. The proposed increase represents a 1.3% increase on our average residential customer, which is also about 80 cents on each monthly bill. These are, the slide shows over time the rate model, how the rate model metrics are met. First of all, you'll see on the monthly billing for our average 5CCF customer that the projected cost is $59.33 a month. Again, this represents an 80 cent increase per month and a 1.37% increase overall. You'll see in the out years, we're projecting a 2.66, 2.63, 2.67 increase, which is typical of what we've seen in our models in the past. Our parity debt coverage ratios continue to be where they need to be, starting at 3, but declining down to about 2.28. And finally, our ratio of ending balance to O&amp;M, we're looking at where we have to achieve over 100%. We see a gradual decline down to 127%. And I do want to mention that we started off the year, again, with around 2.66, 67% that was forecasted last year. But with a lot of hard work with our budget and finance team and tweaking the assumptions in the rate model, we're happy to come to you with a recommendation of 1.5%. So this is how we compare to other utilities in the Triangle area. As you'll see, we are just left of the middle. We do expect that most of our neighbors will see a rate increase this year to finance their needed capital projects, but we do not expect our position will change as represented on this slide. Next, I want to talk with you about some of the success we had this year with our customer assistance programs. We were able to help over 2,300 customers with over $850,000 since March of last year. And thanks to council, we were able to appropriate the revenue from our sale carriers that was used in project share to help over 1,200 customers. We also enjoyed success from the ERA program and LEWAP programs, and we're currently using funds that were allocated to UCAP. Even though we've had a lot of success with our customer assistance program, we still continue to see a significant past due amount. This chart represents what past due accounts looked like when the pandemic first started. You can see how they've climbed over time, but they have not returned anywhere to normal. We used to be about 4 million in past due, and now we're just under 8 million. So today, our recommendation is that we are requesting the proposed rate increase to begin programming and testing the billing system and to notify our largest customers for their budgeting purposes. As in typical fashion, the final rate approval would occur with the adoption of the city's fiscal year '23 budget. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Does anyone have a question for Whit? Councilmember Cox?
Okay. How much money do we take in from development fees to cover the cost of increasing growth?
I don't have that specific number, but we can come up with that. That makes up a significant portion that goes to our debt service.
Okay, because the concern I have is that a lot of our increases are going towards increasing capacity. And obviously, that we need to increase capacity because of increasing growth. And I've always been of the position that development should pick up a large share of that increasing capacity. And I don't understand from this presentation how much development fees are contributing towards paying for that increase in capacity.
We can certainly provide that information. We are revising our capital facility fees. They're out for public comment currently, and that's required by state law now. As you may recall, we have to revise those every five years. And so our financial consultant, Raff Tellis, has been through that information recently, and they have proposed fees that will be carried out going forward. You should see that coming up in a few months at another council meeting for approval.
Because over the next several years, with what you're proposing, we're looking at at least 10% increase in fees on the backs of homeowners and residents of the city, rather than coming from developers, which is where the growth in population is coming from. So I would recommend that we look at increasing development fees going forward as a way of obtaining the revenue necessary to increase the capacity.
Our capital facility fees that we have currently in place are regulated by a new state law. So we have to prescribe to their methods. There are actually three methods that we're allowed to use. Our financial consultant has recommended that we use the system buy-in approach, which is the approach used when there is still some available capacity. But anyway, those recommendations are currently posted on our website, and we're taking comments on that. But we will certainly get back the information you've requested on how much those fees currently are in total each year.
If you could do that in a manager's report, that would be helpful. Any other questions? All right, I just want to say congratulations on the president's award. And thank you for the, and Nicole, I could tell also liked the mug on there that said I drink Raleigh water. So anyhow, thank you, and thanks for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the Stormwater Management Enterprise.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and talk about the fiscal year '23 proposed budget for the Stormwater Management Division. My name is Wayne Miles. I'm the Stormwater Program Manager in the Engineering Services Department. And the presentation I'd like to show you today, first, we'll start off with a review of our mission and vision, talk a little bit about some highlights from the past year, and then go through a summary of the proposed fiscal year '23 budget. Our mission is a quick review is to manage stormwater to preserve and protect life, support healthy natural resources, and complement sustainable growth for the community. And we work toward achieving that mission with input and guidance from the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, which are volunteers appointed by City Council to help give us guidance on policies, on priorities, and the level of service for us to provide to the community to meet their needs and objectives. Our vision is to be the smartest stormwater program possible, to economically and equitably achieve our mission. In short, to be stormwater smart. And we apply that stormwater smart philosophy every day. Our hard-working staff, which consists of 71 staff in the Engineering Services Department, as well as 61 staff in the Stormwater Maintenance Group of Transportation Field Services, apply that be-stormwater-smart philosophy to achieve all of the programs that support our mission. And that means being smarter about how to use innovation and technology to achieve a better level of service to support our customers. It also means helping our customers be smarter about how they can prepare for flooding, to keep their families and communities safe, and to be smarter about how they can engage with us to give us the feedback that we need to help meet their level of service needs. Here's a brief history of the Stormwater Utility Fee. Raleigh started collecting the fee in 2004. And then for about the first 12 years, that fee remained the same until in fiscal year 2017, it was raised $1. And then subsequently, the past two years, it was raised 50 cents in FY21 and $1.50 in FY22. And those recent rate increases have really given us the ability to increase our program levels of service as well as implement some additional programs that I'd like to give some highlights right now. One of those programs, as you may recall, that was supported by this council, is additional green stormwater infrastructure funding to help Raleigh lead by example. And two specific projects where that funding is directly helping us lead by example. One is the Dix Plaza and Play Project, which is under design right now. We're implementing bioretention to help infiltrate stormwater into the ground and improve water quality, and as well as adding a wet meadow, which will also improve water quality in Rocky Branch, which drains directly to Walnut Creek. And especially in Dix Park, this type of green stormwater infrastructure also helps us provide educational opportunities to the community as to the benefits of this type of infrastructure. Another, obviously, high-profile project that we'll be going in right next to where we're sitting right now is the East Civic Tower. And the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Funding Program is going directly to implementing tree silva cells, which provides underground storage and infiltration of stormwater to help reduce the downstream stormwater impacts. And there will also be green roofs on the terraces of the tower. And these will be two very important, visible examples of the city's commitment to implementing green stormwater infrastructure and leading by example. Another program that was increased last year was the flood buyout funding, which is really helping us to reduce flood risk. There were three home purchases over the past year, and buyouts of these three houses improves public safety, gets families out of the way of flood dangers. It also returns open space and improves water quality in these areas. And we're continuing to use this funding to help leverage additional flood buyout grants from FEMA so that we can even further our protection of the community. And another key aspect of the level of service increases that we've achieved in the last two years is reducing the capital improvements backlog that had built up over the years. You may recall from a couple of years ago, our pay-as-you-go CIP funding was $6.5 million. And compared to the backlog, it would take about 100 years or more to work through that CIP backlog. The more recent increases have allowed us to increase the capital improvements funding to over $10 million, which further decrease that backlog. But the real critical strategy that we're working closely with budget and finance to implement is a revenue bond implementation that's being planned and proposed for fiscal year '25. And that's really going to ramp up our ability to get into that backlog much faster and take that backlog down to 38 years or lower as we continue to look at grants and other loan strategies as well. So the fee increase that we're proposing for fiscal year '23 is 18 cents per month per single-family equivalent unit. So that would be the typical, single-family residents would pay 18 cents more per month. That equates to a 2.5% increase. This reflects a shift in strategy moving forward with our rate model and with our rate increases to much more modest, small incremental increases over time. The last two years, increases have allowed us to expand a number of program areas and increase the level of services, as I described. And now we're at a point where we feel like we're in a much better fiscal position to increase and continue those programs at that level of service and continue to get ready for that bond in FY25. Here's some budget numbers that would go along with that proposed 18 cent increase. It would increase, as I said, the single-family equivalent unit fee from $7 per month to $7.18 per month, which would increase our proposed budget from about $32.8 million in this current fiscal year to about $34.2 million next year. And the majority of that we're proposing would go into that CIP budget, which would allow us to fund some additional projects, pay-as-you-go, as well as to fund projects that would help us better prepare for that revenue bond that's upcoming in a couple of years is being planned. A little bit more detail on the breakdown of these budgets. The lower portion of the bars are the operating costs, the green portion. The upper portion of the bar is the capital improvements project budget. The two years that have the bars in the middle, the purple bars, FY21 and FY22, you may recall that we had record rainfalls in fiscal year '19 and '20, and that led to a number of unanticipated emergency infrastructure failures that, with council's permission, we pulled money from our fund balance to make those repairs quickly and restore the level of service to our community. That required us to refund that money, which we have done now in fiscal year '21 and '22. And I'm pleased to report, we are back to meeting our fiscal objectives and no longer anticipate having to refund that fund balance moving forward. Looking solely at the CIP portion of that balance, the proposed FY23 capital improvements would be $11.4 million, which, as I said, does provide a modest but important increase in the CIP funding. And it gets us back up to above the fiscal year '17 budget that we had a number of years ago and allows us to continue to provide that higher level of service to the community. And a couple of key projects that will allow us to do in this next fiscal year. One is the Camp Pond Dam. This is a dam that the city of Raleigh has a road right-of-way across the crest of the dam. And that road is the only way in and out of a neighborhood of approximately 40 houses. So it's very critical and high-risk in that if were something to happen to that dam, there would be no ingress-egress access from that neighborhood. This is a dam that is having some infrastructure issues. We had this on our radar and had proposed it for a couple of years out, but some high-intensity rainfalls over this past winter have accelerated the deterioration. And as you can see where the red arrow is pointing out, the flow out of the dam is actually flowing through the bottom of the pipe, which is degraded. And that can be a dangerous situation if left to remain. Over time, that could wash out that pipe and cause a failure. We have found engineering funds to accelerate the evaluation of this and moving forward. We have found engineering funds to accelerate the evaluation of this and moving forward. The proposed fee increase, though, will also allow us to accelerate the construction of this project repairs without having to push out any previously planned projects. And another example of what this small but important rate increase will give us is the opportunity for the Carolina Pines Project. This is another dam that with one of our recent assessments, we identified some erosion issues going on with this high-hazard dam. We'd like to accelerate those repairs to coincide with a roadway project that is also being done in that vicinity. And, and by coinciding those projects, we'll hope to save efficiencies and save some, some cost on the overall implementation of that, that project. As I mentioned, we're also looking at how implementation of a bond would, would help us moving forward over our next five-year CIP. The pie chart on, on the left represents a scenario where we would continue to have a pay-as-you-go stormwater CIP program. And that CIP would be about sixty-four million dollars over the five-year total, broken down in the, in the major categories as shown. If we are able to implement a bond, as we're planning and proposing to do, that would allow that five-year CIP to go up to about ninety million. So a significant increase in our CIP budgets and our ability to decrease the backlog of stormwater projects that has accumulated. And all of this increase, these numbers assume a, a standard modest scenario with a two-point-five percent increase in fee, feeing, uh, per year over the next five years, where the assumptions built into the rate model. Comparing our fees to our peers in this chart, in this chart, the lighter bars are, are other North Carolina communities with stormwater utility fees. The darker bars are peers in the southeast United States of capital cities that have stormwater utility fees. And we are right about in, in the middle of, of, of these, of these peer cities. And the proposed increase would not change our place in comparison to, to our peers. But we do believe and feel that we are very efficient and effective in how we use our fees to provide a, a very good number, range of programs, as well as a very good level of service to our community for the fees that, that we collect. And in summary, we continue to, to work hard to meet our mission and, and vision to be the smartest stormwater program possible. And we very much appreciate the sport, support this council has given us in order to meet our vision of being stormwater smart. I'd be glad to take any questions at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Miles, for your presentation. I like the continuing emphasis on GSI and look forward to that continuing as you move forward with your program. We gave or supported a pretty big increase last year, I guess, for the CIP to, in the, in the, in the catch-up program there. It sounds like you're not asking for that. I would be interested in that, but it sounds like you're not asking for that. I'm not sure. Instead, you're looking forward to, to a revenue bond. So as to the revenue bond, we're in the twenty-three budget preparation period. And is, so is this looking out two years from now for the twenty-five budget process? And why, why would you wait and not do it ne- next year?
Yeah, good, good question. We are looking out two years, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One, one is financial. We want to make sure that we are in good fiscal shape moving forward, because this would be the very first revenue bond that we would have issued under the stormwater program. So it'll take a little bit more work to put together all of the information needed to go and get a bond rating, and, and that will take a little bit longer. So that, that's an important part of, of this process. The other part of this process is, once we issue those bonds, we, we have three years to, to spend those. And so that, that's going to be a significant jump for our stormwater program. We want to make sure we have the capacity in place, which we, we will, and we're, we're on track to, to do that. We also want to have some projects ready to go, so that they are ready to go into construction in that fiscal year twenty-five. So we're going to do some pre-design work leading up to that in the next two years, so that we'll be ready to go with a, a, a large number of those projects right, right away and implement them in, in the community.
I appreciate that. Thank you. You know, we're all hearing about the growth that's coming, like it or not, and, and having to, you know, we're probably already way behind in that in terms of housing and the housing options that we're trying to put out there. You know, I would be supportive of a more aggressive pace and, and possibly looking at bringing forward a revenue bond next year. And I, I think we, 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 we got to keep up with the pace of growth that's happening now and, you know, doing it next year, I think, would put it more in line with, a- as, as the growth continues to build on us and, and having to react and respond to that through our infrastructure needs. So I would support that. But thank you for your presentation. Look forward to working with you all on your program.
Thank you.
Do we have any?
Take a look at that with budget and finance.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions? Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, thank you for your support. Very much appreciated.
Okay, next we have solid waste services. And I can't wait to hear what the opening remarks are, because they're always entertaining. Don't disappoint me now.
Well, I, I just tell the truth. Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. Always good to see you all, and I'm going to give you the truth. I am, I'm having a little bit of, of a bout of, of vertigo today. So as I look at the screen, I see probably more of you than there actually is on the screen, which is both exciting and frightening at the same time. I think today, I'm excited to be here to talk about our fiscal year twenty-three budget. With me is our Assistant Director of Administration, Ms. Sedell Cherry, and also our new Assistant Director of Operations, Mr. Mike, Michael Rivera. He comes to us from California and has been here since January. Mike comes to us with thirty years of solid waste experience, and we're fortunate to have him here with us in the city of Raleigh. Also here is our fiscal supervisor, Ms. Kathleen Mitchell. And we certainly want to be sensitive to your time today, so we'll get right to talking Today, we'd like to speak with you a little bit about our business plan, which is really the mo- the roadmap that we've never had before to help us guide our way into the year twenty-twenty-five. I'll give you a quick overview of our departmental services, talk a little bit about some key accomplishments that we're really proud of this fiscal year, and then we'll discuss our budget goals and our budget needs for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-three. And then we're going to take a little look into the future and how we can best position our department and the city for the next ten years. I think when we talk about our business plan this year, it's, it was quite a journey for us. We evaluated our old business plan and learned some pretty valuable lessons. For example, so, some of our initiatives were too specific and narrow. We were using language that was difficult for our employees to understand and interpret. Our department has changed. The industry has certainly changed, and the city has changed. We didn't feel our current business plan was representing those changes. So our team, in collaboration with our Budget Management Office, set out on a journey to retreat, dig in deep, and find out who we are as a department and what we wanted to accomplish. The end result was a business plan that was centered around four key components: our people, our customers, our service, and our future. We also collaborated on a mission statement that represented what we have to do, while our vision represented what we want to do. This is a busy slide. We are a busy department. Our customers run far and wide, and we are in front of their homes and businesses, providing essential services every single day. Our services are divided into two key areas. First, we have our core services. These are the services that are easily seen by our customers. They're garbage, recycling, and yard waste. This also includes our recycling for multifamily locations and our Needs Assistance, our backdoor program for our most vulnerable residents in the city. Of course, there are additional services that we are, that we provide, and these are not so easily seen by our customers. These include grease collection, bulky, e-cycle, city-sponsored events, central business district service, bus stops, and dead animal pickup. It always sounds weird when I say that. But those dead animals are not going to pick themselves up in the middle of the night before our residence hits the road the next day. These premium services we provide, in addition to our core services, are very important to our residents and our businesses. As we talk about our business plan, at the focal point of those two things are our people and our service. So I'd like to talk a little bit about our people first, and then a little bit about a couple accomplishments that we're very proud of this past fiscal year. Our staff, our people, play a vital road, role in our ability to provide and maintain all of our critical services. If I'm being honest, the past year has been extremely difficult. There were literally days we did not know how or, or if we would be able to provide services. But yet we did. Staffing shortages are only one of the many challenges our team had to overcome. We've had to rethink the way we recruit and hire. We've had to compete with the market and the private sector for pay, and that has been challenging. Our department held an average vacancy rate of sixteen percent. That's thirty of our one-hundred-and-eighty-two budgeted positions that were empty. Despite those headwinds, and as we mark our second year of this pandemic, our staff has maintained a high level of service to our customers, oftentimes by willingly taking on additional tasks and additional responsibilities, filling the gaps in the department or working long hours and weekends. Always all hands on deck. Their resilience and commitment has been inspiring. So if you ask me, what can we possibly be proud of in the middle of the worst social, economic, and health crisis in history? I would say it's our people. They show up every day, hot, cold, snow, rain, it doesn't matter. They show up every day for the past twenty-four months. It gave our residents hope and made things feel normal when things weren't normal. I'd like to take just a moment to recognize some of our employees' amazing contributions. For example, Pam Duncan. In the summer of twenty-twenty-one, Pam, who's one of our code compliance officers, witnessed a couple fall to the ground during her patrol. After stopping to help, she discovered the husband had become disoriented on their walk, and the couple fell as the wife was attempting to help him. Pam ran over to assist and stayed with the couple until help arrived. William Barber. In October twenty-twenty-one, William, one of our crew drivers, witnessed a ci- a citizen in distress while out on the field. The resident was pregnant and appeared to be fainting. William got out of his truck, rushed over to help the woman, and helped her onto her porch and sat her down. He did not leave until he ensured she was okay. And then there's Jacob and Earl. Jacob Fuller and Earl Graham were on break at a local gas station when they encountered a customer that was bleeding heavily from a leg injury. Jacob used his belt as a tourniquet to slow the resident's bleeding while Earl called nine-one-one. They both remained on scene until EMS arrived. There are many more stories like these, and not just in solid waste department, but all of our departments throughout our community. And sometimes it has nothing to do with the service and everything to do with how we serve our community. Something we're pretty proud of is our landfill restoration. It's one of our key accomplishments, and I wanted to update you on how that was going. Our steam, our stream restoration project throughout the years has been at the top of our list to address. Through growth and impervious surfaces, it created a significant and concerning erosion to the stream that runs through our landfill, to the point where it was threatening to expose our old waste. We embarked on a joint project that was partially funded by the city, along with the grant, a grant from the North Carolina Land and Water Fund, and I'm pleased to say that this project is scheduled to be completed this June. I also want to talk about the legacy pile. You know, the legacy pile. You may be asking yourself, is Dan ever going to stop talking about the legacy pile? And the answer would be no, because it was a pain. Three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cubic yards of backlog organic material from the past twelve years, stored on-site and piled three stories high. And just for context, one cubic yard is approximately the size of your oven. Two-hundred cubic yards is about the size of a mobile home or a small house. So let me say it again, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cubic yards of old yard waste. But in two thousand and seventeen, you supported and approved the resources for a pilot program that resolved our throughput problem, which was the cause of the issue. And in two thousand and nine, you approved the resources to remove the infamous legacy So I'm happy to report, we are ahead of schedule with this process. Couple pictures here showing two of our different piles. The red is the perimeter of the piles when we started, and the yellow is the area that has been completed to date, removed all the way down to the soil. More importantly, some of this material is being used on-site, and the remainder is being used in mine reclamation, so none of it will be placed in a landfill. These piles took up twenty-three of our sixty-seven usable acres at our yard waste center. Now with the additional space, we can prepare for new ways to reuse and process our yard waste that we collect at the curb. I would now like to turn it over to our Assistant Director of Administration and our Project Manager for our upcoming yard waste enhancement, Ms. Sedell Cherry.
Good afternoon. I don't know if I'm quite as entertaining as Dan, but it is a skill that I'm definitely working on. He's the self-proclaimed beauty and brains of solid waste, so I guess that leaves me to beat a muscle. So everybody has their own role. But as Dan said earlier, my name is Sedell Cherry. I'm the Assistant Director of Administration. And while I'm new to the podium, I'm not new to the city. I've been with solid waste in the city for about six years now, and I appreciate the opportunity to present our FY twenty-three budget alongside Dan. But before I get started, I'd like to take the time to thank council, Madam Mayor, and the city management team for their support over the last few years. Your partnership and our initiatives have played a major role in the transformation of our department, and I've seen tremendous growth over the last couple of years that would not have been possible without your support. Which is a great segue into our yard waste enhancement project. This is one of the initiatives that we brought before you initially in twenty-twenty-one, which was improved in FY twenty-twenty-two. The pandemic highlighted a few ongoing challenges with our yard waste collection and providing predictable and reliable yard waste service. During FY twenty-two, we proposed, and you approved, that we switch from weekly to bi-weekly collection. You also approved the implementation of city-issued ninety-five-gallon yard waste carts, eliminating plastic bags from the yard waste stream, and placing limitations on the volume of bags and bundles at the curb. We've had several touchpoints to educate customers on the program changes and enhancements thus far. As outlined in the brief we provided a few weeks ago, we have several communications still scheduled to take place between now and our go-live date. The code changes needed to support our new limitations will be up for approval in April of this year. Cart delivery is expected to begin May the second and should be completed by June the sixth. Customers are able to start using their lime-green, city-issued carts as soon as they receive them, and all program changes will become effective on July the fifth, which means that we will no longer collect customer-owned containers at the curb, nor will we collect via via plastic bags. The development of our FY23 budget was led by a few goals. We wanted to ensure that we could maintain at least our current service levels. We wanted to ensure that our departmental resources were aligned with both city strategic initiatives and our new FY23/25 business plan. And we wanted to make sure that we consider expected increases in personnel costs, fuel, and supplies that are sure to affect our budget due to inflation and supply chain issues. In addition to common increases that we all share citywide, Solid Waste Services does have a few external cost considerations that are specific to our industry. This year, the tipping fees at the Wake County landfill have increased by $800,000. Like many organizations, Wake County has also experienced increased expenses in operational costs and increased fees to maintain their air quality regulation. Those changes, mixed with the fact that they haven't had an increase since 2015, has caused a significant increase in our costs. Their increases are expected to take effect on 7-1. And our Sunoco recycling processing fees. This is an external cost consideration we've dealt with for the last few years. Market prices in the recycling industry have been volatile since 2020. Although commodity prices have improved in the last year, in comparison to prices in 2020, the market is still highly volatile. Due to this volatility, the current economic landscape, our budget for Sunoco will match our FY22 projections to account for any potential downturns in the market. We'll continue to monitor trends in the market and make adjustments as needed. And that brings us to our rate proposal. This year, we're requesting an approval for a $0.25 increase on the residential collection fee to mitigate our increased expenses. If approved, our residential fee would increase from $15.45 to $15.70. With a $4.60 recycling fee, our new total rate would be $20.30 effective 7-1. As shown in our fee history, we are requesting a modest increase in comparison to prior years to account for the increased operational costs. In comparison to neighboring municipalities, our proposed rate is still below the local average. The figures represented here are current fees as of FY22. In comparison to national peer cities, we are still below average cost for Solid Waste Services as well, with Greenville, North Carolina being the only municipality below our proposed fee. The approval of a $0.25 increase would place Solid Waste Services in a better position for future initiatives. As Stan stated earlier, one of the core components of our business plan was a focus on the future. We have a few long-awaited, exciting initiatives on the horizon we'd like to share. One of those is our landfill redevelopment project, our landfill monitoring requirements in December of 2027, which will give us the opportunity to redevelop that space. We've already begun initial conversations with sustainability and our local partners on projects that will promote an equitable and inclusive community. We're also planning to do a feasibility study in the near future. The study will provide us with the necessary data to develop a plan and a timeline for citywide curbside organics. We've already taken small steps toward this initiative in the way of the yard waste center enhancement, the removal of the legacy pile, and the implementation of city-issued yard waste carts. Solid Waste Services has had some major transformations over the past few years in the level of service we provide, and due to the shift, it's important for us to reevaluate our fee structure to ensure we're effectively recovering our costs. It's likely that we'll have some information to bring to Council during the next fiscal year on our findings. Thank you for your time. Stan and I are prepared to take any questions that you have.
As always, that did not disappoint, and now we have muscle, too. Go, girl. I just want to say, blown away by the amount of work that has been done by this department and the challenges that you faced. And I think Stan, as a storyteller, does a really good job of making this real and sharing with us the work that you all do. So I just want to say thank you and express my gratitude for the hard work that's happened over the past two years and very trying times. I don't have any questions. I think you covered everything, but anyone have a question for the team? Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I support your statements, and I know the last two years have been especially hard on this department within the city, as it has been on most of the city workers, but these folks have been out there on the front lines, interacting with the public a lot, and with the demands already on them, and with the limited staff and all the things that they've had to deal with during COVID. So I appreciate their continued efforts. And this is one for Stan, since he has more of a history with this, with me at least, is recycling. Sort of, Stan, where do you see us going? The future recycling, our program in the city, and I might have missed this earlier on in your presentation, but sort of big picture, how are we looking? Are we able to? How are we doing on the market selling recycle? You know, where are recycling going? Is it, especially with COVID, programs been reduced? Are we still in a growing posture with our recycling program? What do you see going forward with our recycling program?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Councilor Knight. That's a great question. We work closely with not just Sunoco, our processing partner, but also the other, my colleagues throughout the United States and the private sector, to try to get a bead on how the industry is doing. As we know, the past 10 years has been an absolute roller coaster, majority of which was a declining weighted average price on commodities. What we've seen probably in the past 12 to 18 months is a stabilization of the market and a slight uptick in the commodity rates. I think what that signals is a couple of things. I think that the market was built on a weak business model of past 10 years when people were making a lot of money from the sales of recyclables, and we've had to rethink that business model, and that's going to take a lot of time, but we're moving in the right direction. But there's a lot of things that are uncertain in the future regarding what's happening globally, so I think we just need to position ourselves to be responsive to any further declines in the market. So I guess to answer your question, I would say there are some positive signs, but we would, we would hope for the best and prepare for the worst.
Okay, thank you. And maybe, and it could be just to me, more of an in-depth, sort of, I'd like to see some analysis on where y'all think this is going because of the economic impact it's going to have on us, because I do, I hear what you're saying, and you know, we all read the same, you know, national newspapers and whatever, and international news about where recycling's heading. So I'm intrigued, but also interested in the, in the future of it. So I appreciate that and look forward to work with y'all on how we position ourselves as a city in the best way for the, the, the future of the recycling market. Thanks.
Councilmember Branch?
I just want to say, Stan, thank you to you and your team for all of your work. If it's probably at least four or five times a week, I'm passing the landfill on New Hope Road there, and I can see the work you all are doing and the improvements there. Just have one question. Did you do any additional hiring to help restore that yard waste? That landfill there off of New Hope?
Are we talk, I'm sorry, Councilman Branch.
Yeah, the yard, the yard waste facility off of New Hope Road. I was wondering, in order to, you know, restore it and deal with that heaps, and you mentioned that it's going to be completed by June of '22. I wanted to know if you did any additional hiring in order to meet those numbers?
Yeah, thank you. I understand the question now. Thank you. No, we did not. That was a contracted service that we went out to RFP and got a bidder in to do that. They just are being very efficient and are ahead of schedule, so it is, it is good news for us that they're going to be done sooner than expected.
Definitely, but I think that's your great leadership and staying on top of them that has helped do that. So I commend you for, for that hard work, and to all of the workers that are out there. As you said, rains, leaks, snow, or ice, they tend to be out there, and I pray that we can do what we can to help close some of your staffing gaps this year.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, and you're getting thumbs up, so thank you, everyone. Next, we have other enterprise funds update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm Mary Viggo with Budget Management Services. In an effort to be highly efficient, today I am here to present on some of our smaller other enterprise funds. So I'll provide an overview of where we are in the fiscal year '23 budget process in relation to the Raleigh Convention Center and Performing Arts Complex, our Raleigh Parking, and our Transit Enterprise. The Raleigh Convention Center and Performing Arts Center staff continue to oversee the reopening of programs and events at the various venues. Staff have increased bookings and diverse programming at the Performing Arts Center by 60% over last year. The Convention Center is expected to generate $54 million in direct economic impact to the community, which, which trends with pre-pandemic numbers. The department has also supported several downtown events that include the rink at Red Hat, which also sold 16,000 tickets, the Amped Up Concert Series, they provided eight lunchtime concerts, and two Plaza pop-up markets. The Convention Center has also hosted two esports events in fiscal year '22, and they have three planned for fiscal year '23. We look at their budget, the Raleigh Convention and Center and Performing Arts Center has seen a return to semi-normal programming over the fiscal year, despite multiple variants that have impacted our community. We expect the fiscal year '23 budget to return to pre-pandemic levels of operation, and the budget is, and the fiscal year '23 budget is balanced with no significant fee increases and includes 50 booked events, which will result in 63,000 hotel rooms contracted thus far. Staff has also been working diligently over the past fiscal year to improve the financial outlook for the parking fund. As residents increasingly visit downtown for work and entertainment, parking revenues continue to see improvement. With an expected strong return of downtown and increased revenue, parking is able to balance the operating budget for fiscal year '23 without a general fund subsidy. However, there is no new funding for capital improvements. Additionally, due to equipment upgrades, parking has made some minor changes to its fees that allow for customers to pay without having to use coins, and those fees will be brought back for consideration in April with all of our fees. Go Raleigh continues to provide critical transportation options for members of our community. Staff has developed a fiscal year '23 budget that continues the suspension of fares for the upcoming fiscal year. The fiscal year '23 budget continues the general fund $21.1 million investment in transit. And to continue, and to continue to cover net deficits, the city has programmed CARES Act funding for fiscal year '23. The Wake Transit Plan represents a critical partnership with our regional partners to fund investments in transit. The plan is primarily funded through a half-cent sales tax collected through Wake County. As a result of continued sales tax growth in fiscal year '22, there is a minimal impact to Wake Transit operations. Fiscal year '23 programmed Wake Transit projects include the continued implementation of the Bus Rapid Transit routes, which includes the design for the western-southern corridors. Funding is programmed for continued enhancements at transit facilities and continued improvements for bus, bus stop shelters. The plan also includes expansion of the Bus Operations Facility to expand CNG fueling stations. We do have staff here from all of these various areas that can answer any questions that city council may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mary? Councilmember Branch?
Yes, thank you, Mary. I understand the fare free is covered for one more year. Is that the last year that we'll have any opera funding available? And if so, where's the conversation about where we go after the opera funding is over?
So it's, same, it's CARES Act funding that is used right now to supplement it, and we'll continue to monitor that to see what is available. Our commitment is to bring something back in the fall for city council consideration in terms of fare free. So the budget for '23 does include fare free, and then we would work with transit over the next few months to bring something back in the fall to talk about where do we go with the '24 budget, especially as some of the federal funding runs out, and we want to look at, what do we mean by fare free in the future?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mary. And then we have other items, our final agenda item.
Yes, Mayor, and I'll just stay here for this item as well. So good afternoon again, Mary Viggo with Budget Management Services. This item on the agenda is usually there to provide an opportunity for council to ask us any questions that were not related to agenda items. I would also like at this moment to just provide you with an update on two items following up from our February 21st work session. So those two quick updates, the first one, if you recall, is associated with our public safety proposed starting pay changes that staff brought before you at the 21st work session. This slide is just a reminder that we looked at data across Wake County to calculate a Wake County average of, for each of our sworn positions. Staff presented proposed ranges for sworn at the Wake County average plus 5%. After the budget work session, staff identified an error in the presentation which affected only five positions, and we wanted to update you today on what those errors were so that we had full disclosure. So as you can see, the chart, I think it may be on your left, as you can see, displayed on the 21st, in terms of firefighter and senior firefighter, those minimums were not moved, and the corrected proposed that we would recommend as part of this, as we move in the budget process to continue to evaluate it, is that $46,000 for firefighter and $48,009 for senior firefighter. And so these are the exact numbers that should have been presented on the 21st that represent the Wake County average plus 5%. The remaining minimums below that on the corrected proposed are the same as what you saw previously, and they are correct. In terms of police, there were three affected positions, and you can see, the police officer, the senior officer, and the detective. The corrected proposed amounts are highlighted in yellow. You can see for a police officer, 49-8, a senior officer, 55-6, and a detective, 58-4. The remaining corrected underneath that of detective are correct, and they were what was presented in February. We just wanted to make you and the organization aware that these are the, what, you know, what our mistake was in moving forward, that these are the numbers we're working on. I will inform you that we are continuing to work on and review our employee compensation as a whole as part of the fiscal year '23 budget process, so we'll continue to bring updates to council as we move forward in this. The second item I did want to provide an update on, as you recall, at the work session on the 21st, I also provided an update on temporary and part-time pay. We presented some changes and proposed an increase to a new minimum for our temporary employees from $11 an hour, I mean, from $8.25 an hour to $11 an hour. I did mention at the work session that we would like to implement these earlier or begin to advertise them. to advertise them due to the current condition in parks in terms of their ability to hire temporary staffing, especially as we go into one of the busiest times for them. So in effort to assist them to hire that much-needed staff, we are proposing an early implementation of the plan to align with those program timetables. And so this would allow them to begin to recruit and attract and bring staff in. We're looking at a phased approach, and what is on the screen in front of you is that first phase. And so that chart highlights those identified positions that parks needs as critical, critical staff for the upcoming spring and summer. And so we would hope to implement these in early April. There is a cost associated with it, but we are confident that we can absorb that in our current year budget for the remainder of the year. And then, as I mentioned, there are other phases, and we'll keep council updated as we begin to look at the rest of the season in terms of May and June and what that means for park staff. But this is really a critical time, as you can see that list and what's on there, in terms of our ability to recruit and retain those, those staff moving forward. And so I do have staff here from Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources that can answer any questions that council may have, but I did want to provide you today with an update on both of those items. And so we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Okay, Mary, I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, city manager, is there anything else?
I think we covered all of the items today, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll see you all in person tomorrow at 11:30 for our work session and 1 o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you to the staff and the team for the great job that they did in presenting, but also for all the hard work that has happened over the past two years, especially due to COVID. So thank you to everyone. It's deeply appreciated.